Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. Mr. Dan, a community roll call, please.
Ms. Si.
Here.
Mr. Grippo. President. Dr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Maris. Mr. Shabana. Ms. Singh.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. LaCourte.
Here. And for the record, Sammy has said that he would be unable to make tonight's meeting. Can you read the open public's meeting up, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, Chapter 31, Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, The Star-Lake Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Club Manager, District Schools, Offices, and Associations, VDO Presidents, and folks upon the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential?
So moved.
So, seconded by, second. Nishida, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned to confidential. For the purpose of discussing confidential matters pertaining to student head members, minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists, and we're adjourned to confidential.
Welcome back. Today is still December 20th, 2022, and we just returned from confidential session. Minutes for the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Dennis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge.
Of me? Okay. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you. Mike, would you read the mission statement, please?
Absolutely. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Moved by Artiman, seconded by...
Second.
Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our agenda is now adopted. And now we are on to a presentation by Dr. Lagren from the Sadhani Foundation.
Thank you, Board of Ed. Not really too much of a presentation, other than words of gratitude and just sort of remembering how Mr. Sadhani's involvement in our young students' pursuit of innovation, creativity, STEM, problem-solving came to be. I think it was two springs ago, Vimal sent an email, I think to Dr. Ravalli, who shared it with me, and wondered if I had seen an article of this amazing young girl who had solved a problem in Michigan, I think. And, you know, are you guys doing a competition or anything like that special in your district that can provide that particular kind of opportunity? He said, "Well, we do a lot of great things." I said, "But that sounds like an interesting idea." And he said, "Well, I want you to think about it, something where you're innovating and problem-solving, and if there's any way I could support that, I want to do it." I said, "Wow, this is a great opportunity for us. Let me get some folks together. Let's see what we can come up with." And about a year ago, year and a half ago, David Haras and several others helped put an idea together that we presented to Vimal and his wonderful organization to consider. And we said we wanted to have a competition that started with the elementary level internally at first, and then we would look to expand to the middle school this year and to the high school next year. And it wouldn't always be an internal competition. It would be something we started together and then entered external competitions across the state and the country. And Vimal pushed, 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 and said, "As long as Franklin, you know, wins them and gets positive attention for their work." I said, "That's always the goal. You know, that's always the goal." And so this isn't so much a presentation as a deep expression of gratitude. Thank you, Vimal. And I know you have something you want to say to us and also a check to contribute to us, which is equally important and appreciated. So thank you, Vimal. Maybe we could clap for him as he comes up.
Thank you, Dan. I think you spoke very well, but just want to make some clarification. The girl was from California. And my attention went to the very, very, the New York Times and also came on the Channel 4. This girl won the national award in the United States, number one. And the type of invention she did and got my attention, I got the paper copy and probably I forwarded Dr. Ravalli and unto him, "Look, can we do something in our school?" And that was the starting point, and it took few months to convince them. And eventually they agreed. And just want to say, good evening. Thank you very much for your formal invitation to join you at your Board of Education meeting. I would like to recognize Dr. Ravalli, Dan Legren, Mrs. Nancy LaCourte, Adaman Singh, Board of Officers, Billson Orville, my wife, Pappu, and my friend, Nirmal Shah. On behalf of the Sadhani Foundation, it's my pleasure to confirm our partnership and commitment for the grant to Franklin Township Public Schools Invention Competition. Our grant to the Franklin Township Public School will provide great opportunity and will enable the students to participate in the innovation competition such as STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. I myself engineer, I did in 1959, and I designed nuclear potion, 1,000 megawatts each, one in Forkett River, one in Three Mile Island, Fukushima, and Tokai. And our company is in Denver, New Jersey. Now, it gives us great joy to mention that we did witness an amazing innovation presentation done by the elementary school students. Now we are looking forward to another great invention competition in May and 2023. We are very pleased to present the Sadhani Foundation grant check to the Board of Education in the amount of $6,000 to contribute towards the 2023 Franklin Township Public School Invention Competition. We hope that one day, students of Franklin Township will bring fame to the township at the state and at the national level. The holiday season is here, and it gives us great joy to wish you and your family a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year 2023. Thank you very much.
Can we take a picture with... We're just going to officially vote on that, Dan, first. We're going to officially vote on that first, so... And then, Frank, can you do roll call on A1, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Artiman? Can you second it?
Okay, I'm going to move A1, acceptance of the donation.
I'll second.
Mike, second. All in favor? Okay.
Aye.
And you're going to do roll call? Good.
Ms. Si.
Yes.
Mr. Grippo.
Of course.
Dr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Ms. Singh.
Yes.
Dr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. LaCourte.
Yes. Thank you very much. And now, if we could go take a picture?
Step out for it, folks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to the Spring Program. You'll be there, right?
Okay, I'll take the chair.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
But now I will hand the check over to Ryan.
Do we have our student representative on the phone, Mary? Okay. Now we're on to our superintendent's report. John?
Sure. First, before Mr. Sadhani leaves, I just want to once again thank the Sadhani Foundation for their continued support in our efforts to create a challenging and positive experience for our students in the area, STEAM. We do appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing the partnership and further expanding it. So I look forward to the Spring Program. That was an exciting opportunity last year to hear the wonderful innovative ideas that our kids engineered, and we are looking forward to this year, some rich experience as well. So thank you. We really appreciate it. And then I'll close with a happy holidays to all. I want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. Please take some time to enjoy friends and family during the holiday season. And as a reminder, our schools close after a minimum session day this Friday for winter break, and we reopen on January 3rd, which is Tuesday. So, yeah, minimum session on Friday, and then close next week, and then the Monday after the New Year, which is the observance of New Year's Day, and then open for business again, full session on Tuesday, January 3rd. So happy holidays to all.
Thank you.
And to all a good night. No.
So now for my Board President's report. Franklin High School Cheer News. This past fall, the Franklin High School Cheer Leading Squad competed in a regional competition and placed first in one category, receiving two bids to compete at a national level this February in Orlando, Florida. This is the first time that this has happened in over a decade. The Franklin Athletics Booster Club has launched a fundraising campaign to allow our warriors to travel to Florida and compete. If you would like to donate, please reach out to the Booster Club at FranklinWABC, which stands for Warrior Athletic Booster Club, at Gmail for more information, and they also have a tab on the district's website. The MLK Breakfast. Today I had the opportunity of, and honor of, recording my message for the 25th Annual Martin Luther King Breakfast that will be held on Monday, January 16th, at the Double Tree Hotel. Tickets, ticket information is available on ftmlk.org and district website shortly. And this program raises scholarship money for our students, so please make every effort to attend. And the Warrior Alumni and Family Video Campaign. The district is seeking stories and videos from Franklin Township Public Schools alumni about their experiences in our schools and what qualities make up a Franklin Warrior. We will also be reaching out to our current student families in the near future, asking them to submit photos of their own Warrior families so that we can feature these images on our website and social media and celebrate diversity, which makes us proud. And that's the end of my Board President's report, but now we're going to do What's So Great About Franklin? Lori, we'll start with you.
One of the things I love about Franklin is the willingness of the community at large, especially our business community, to support our students in their search for their future through internships for special ed, as well as for employment in the summers, et cetera, for our kids that are in regular ed. The business community is very generous in their support of our kids, and I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you. Dennis?
As we embark onto the holiday season, I guess one of the things that I could reflect on with Franklin is that we give our kids the opportunity of going into the holiday season in good spirits in the sense of academia, enrichment, and, I guess, within the sports itself, that we still constantly embrace those who are participating in winter sports during these times. And I guess the spin or the point that I want to bring home during these holidays is, let's just reflect on what we have achieved from September till now and expand on that into the New Years.
Thank you. Nishida?
I appreciate the diversity in our township, which gives everyone a chance to learn and celebrate how every culture celebrates holidays and welcomes the New Year. So happy holidays to all. Have a happy and a safe New Year.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, got to make sure this thing is on, okay? I want to piggyback a little bit on what Nancy said. The last month or so, I've been working neck and neck with the cheer team. And what I'm most proud about is the integrity and the discipline and the love that the team has to reach their goal. But every group needs a leader, and we have an outstanding teacher and coach in Ms. Lauren Francis that I rarely see. The time she puts in over the weekends and working to reach this goal is absolutely amazing. We also have a committee. I see Katina Jackson back there and many others that are working to help the team. So I'm most proud of that this month.
Thank you. Walter?
One thing I think that's great about Franklin is we, especially now with COVID being over, allowing our kids to have an opportunity to step out of Franklin, step outside of Franklin. Just recently, the FHS CTE Dance Students hit Broadway, and of course, my youngest was a part of that experience, and it gave her a different... They went to see Alvin Ailey, and it gave her a different viewpoint, because she was like, "Oh, my gosh, this is probably going to be boring. It's like 45 minutes, 45 minutes." But she had an amazing time, and it just opened up her eyes and allowed her to see things a little bit different. So I am glad that Franklin has given our kids the opportunity to dream and to see their dreams up close and personal.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Nancy. I guess one thing I'd like to say is, you know, last month was probably the worst meeting for me to miss. There were probably some of my favorite people in my life ever in this room with... Besides, besides these folks, with the SGS players. What I think, you know, and what I really, you know, enjoy about Franklin is that people care. And even though that team, you know, may be kind of moving away from being on that support for those arts in the district, there is a new set of people coming in that is going to add and contribute and make this community and school system continue with our excellence in the arts programs. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I have a lot of hope because people in Franklin care and they contribute their time. So, thanks.
Thank you. Artiman?
What I am thankful for and happy for is our team here sitting. I think we've done phenomenal, and I'm looking forward to the next year of working together and taking Franklin forward and, you know, bringing new opportunities for our kids, supporting our staff, supporting everyone in the district who is involved, and making the community feel proud of our schools. That's what I'm thankful for and hopeful for.
Thank you. And for me, we have amazing kids. We're very fortunate. They're so talented. And today I had the opportunity to talk to a young man who came back to see Mr. Pinnix as I was taping the MLK video, and he just was so excited about coming back. And when our kids come back, it's like they come back because they're just so excited. And I said, "Did we prepare you for college?" And he said, "Definitely." And so we have great kids that are doing amazing things, but we also have fantastic staff that is bringing that out of them, that is helping them find their joy, find their passions, guiding them, opening up new windows and opportunities for them so they can figure out who they want to be and they can be the best versions of themselves. So I am really grateful for our kids, but I'm really grateful for our staff. And with that, we have some amazing families, too. So thank you to our families. And now, can I get a motion to open public comment, please?
So moved.
By Artiman, seconded by...
Second.
Nishida? Nishida, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on agenda items is now open to the public. Five minutes per speaker. If you're calling in, please press star five. And just so you know that this will be the last meeting that we have people calling into. Do you have anyone? Nope.
Seeing no one, I make a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment by Artiman, seconded by...
Second.
Walter, all in favor? Opposed? Public comment is now closed on agenda items. And now we are going to forego reading, because it's been a very long meeting for us, we're going to forego reading our committee and liaison reports, and they will be available for you on the website. And now we are on to our new business section.
I would like to make a motion to move the following. R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement, A3 Affirm Harassment, Intervention, and Bullying Decisions, A4 HIBKs 236264 Affirm, A5 HIBKs 236217 Affirm, A6 Use of School Facilities, A7 Revised Policies, Second Reading, A8 Revised Regulations Adoption, A9 Revised Policies, First Reading, A10 NJ Home Room Submission, B1 Warrants and Payrolls, B2 Financial Reports, B3 Contract Approval, A Through J, B4 Change Orders, None at This Time, B5 Award of an EUS for Group Medical and Prescription Drug Benefits, B6 Award of RFP for a Vocational Program, B7 Receipt of Bids, B8 Award of Bid, B9 Submission of Fiscal Year 23 NJSDA Emergent Project and Capital Maintenance Program, C1 Out-of-District Student School Year 2223, C2 Field Trip Destinations, C3 Field Trip Applications, C4 Deloitte Accounting Career Exploration, C5 New Courses, C6 Course Name Change, C7 Dissertation Study, P1 New Job Description, and P2 Personnel Report Number 6, dated December 20th. Once again, I would like to make a motion to move R1, M1, A1 through A10, B1 through B7, B9, C1 through C7, and P1 and P2.
Artiman, before you go on, I guess the A numbers may have been misnumbered on our agenda here.
Yeah, it's A2.
Sorry, A2 through... Yeah, I apologize. It's A2 onwards. We already approved day one.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have all that? Okay, can you do roll call, please? Second?
Here.
Thank you, Nishida. Okay, now roll call.
Ms. Si. Mr. Grippo.
So yes, except abstention on B1 for check 114802. Otherwise, yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes, except for abstaining from B1, check number 114806. But other than that, yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, for all, except I am abstaining from B1, check number 114812.
Ms. Maris?
Yes, but I'm abstaining on count A04, as I was unable to attend the complete hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Singh?
Yes, on everything except B1, check number 114862.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourte?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now we are on to comments from the public on any topic. Five minutes per speaker. If you're on the phone, please press star five. Otherwise, please come up to the podium.
I make a motion to open public comment.
Seconded by... Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on any topic is now open.
I need a stamp. Good evening. Ed Petasnik to Terhun Court, council member in Ward 1 here in Franklin Township. First of all, I just want to wish you a happy holidays and a happy New Year, and also thank the Sadhani Foundation for their generous support year over year for innovation competition, which is just awesome. There's so many exciting things happening in the Franklin Township schools. I did want to flag what I think is going to happen on January 3rd, to have the cheerleading team come and join us at the council meeting, hopefully elevate the fundraising request so that no student is left behind here in New Jersey while others are competing in Florida. We have a community with folks with very varied financial backgrounds, and we want to make sure everyone has that opportunity to demonstrate the great skills that they've learned over time, and I think that's a really great... I've made a personal contribution, so I invite others to do that as well, and hopefully also the great accomplishments they have, we can recognize that at that reorganizational meeting for the council. And then in addition, either on the 10th or the 24th, you're all invited because President LaCourte notified me that it is the School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to make sure that the council recognizes the important work that you do for the 7,000 students in our township. So when we get that all set up for what date that'll be, if you could please come and join us... if you could please come and join us, I'm sure there'll be a quorum. It'll be a chance, interaction, and there'll be no action taken. But, um, each of you does a tremendous amount of work over the course of the year and through the summer. And it means a lot to the families that entrust you with their children and what their futures hold for their families as they go on to contribute to our community. So, um, I hope that I can, um, you know, on behalf of the council, recognize those contributions. So, uh, mark your calendar for three days in January for potentially school board related things on the council agenda, the 3rd, the 10th, or the 24th. Um, and, uh, thank you again for everything you do and enjoy your time with your families. Hopefully you get some rest and relaxation. If it's anything like me, I can't believe that earlier this year we were still struggling with getting together, um, that, I mean, we were wearing masks and, and, and things really have shifted in a lot of ways. But it is a lot of stress on us that, um, we haven't had a chance to decompress from. So I'm hoping over the holidays, we all can take a breath and, uh, pick back up with a wonderful 2023. So, uh, congratulations on a great year that is a calendar year in the middle of your academic year and have a very happy holiday and new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Member Petasnik. And have a very happy holiday yourself. Is there anyone else from the public or on the phone? Okay.
Seeing no one, I make a motion to close public comment.
So second.
Motion, close public comment made by Arteman, seconded by Dennis. All in favor? Opposed? And now we're on to good of the order. Do you have anything, Mike?
Uh, I, I just want to say I ran into the, the cheerleading squad and, um, Ms. Francis at the, uh, grocery store last weekend. And I just want everybody to know that some of the cheerleading squad, uh, is very excited to be staying in a hotel. As Ed, Ed mentioned, you know, folks come from, you know, all kinds of resources and stuff. This might be the first trip that some of these girls have ever gotten to take. So, you know, please support them. Let's get them to where they go so they can compete for us and make Franklin proud.
Walter?
I'm just a happy holidays to all of Franklin, our teachers, our students. Um, Dr. Ravelli and your team, this absolutely amazing school board. Um, be safe. Um, have, take this opportunity to, um, spend time with your family, your friends, and folks you haven't seen in a while. Pick up a phone and call someone and, and tell them and let them know you're thinking about them. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you. Bill?
Just a happy holiday. I had made my comments earlier. Have a great new year.
Wow, short, Bill. Thank you, Nishida. Nothing? Dennis?
Uh, just, uh, echoing everybody else, uh, uh, happy holidays, happy new years. Um, give your chance to, um, uh, give the students a chance to relax and reset and, uh, bring in 23 in good fashion. Happy new year.
Thank you. Lori?
I just want to reiterate the board's thanks to the Sadhani Foundation for their contribution to our children's education and innovation. And I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday and a happy, healthy new year. Kids, come back refreshed and ready to work.
Thank you. And I too would like to wish everyone a very, um, happy and healthy winter break and whatever it is that you celebrate, um, enjoy it. Oh, man. I am so sorry. I'm so sorry. Arteman, go. Okay, so just to everybody to have a very healthy, healthy and happy break and whenever you're celebrating, um, enjoy it. And pick up the phone, as Walter said, there are people that are struggling that you don't realize that they're struggling. Um, you can't always see what's inside somebody and just let them know that you're thinking about them and check in and say, are you okay? And that's it. And now, Arteman Singh, Vice President.
So I have a quote that I'm going to leave everyone with. So what is your new year resolution going to be? Is it going to be to celebrate a win? Is it going to be to take care of others or start taking care of yourself? Or is it going to be to have a happier home life, treated a little more like work? I wish you all a very happy new year.
See, that was the perfect thing to end on. And with that, we are adjourned.